Greetings, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Oakdale Planning Commission. Luke, roll call please.
Pearson.
Here.
Willenbring.
Here.
Campbell.
Present.
Stalarsky.
Here.
McCully.
Here.
Diotta is absent, and Hagan also absent.
We'll call for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First order, or next order, is the approval of the agenda. Does everyone have the agenda? You've got a question?
I do, even though I wasn't here last time. I did watch it on YouTube, I was watching it.
Agenda, not approval of minutes yet.
Oh, are you on the, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, that'll be next. Okay, anyone got any questions on the agenda? Otherwise, call for motion to approve.
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now the approval of minutes.
Thank you. I wasn't here, which is, I had an excuse, but on page six it talks about, it was second by Commissioner Campbell, and I don't think Chris was there.
It's already been noted, and Luke was gonna make a comment on that.
Perfect.
Yes, so it was Commissioner Willenbring who made the second, and that was for the item regarding companion animal care.
Okay.
Anyone have any other changes or to suggest to the minutes? I look for a motion to approve as amended.
Someone move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain, yeah.
Was that in the?
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now is a time for open forum. And open forum provides an opportunity to be heard and is not normally an opportunity to debate an issue. During the open forum portion of the commission meeting, all persons wishing to address the commission shall approach the podium and when recognized by myself, clearly state their name, address, group organization if representative applicable, and subject being addressed. If the person has indicated that they would like to comment, like their comment read by the chair, I can read it. Generally, a time period of no more than 20 minutes is reserved for public comment, with each speaker receiving three-minute time limit, and if they could please plan their remarks accordingly and not do replications of a previous speaker. At that point, I call it for open forum. Anyone wishing to make comment, please step forward to the podium. Seeing none, I'll just offer it again, just tell, okay.
Chair, may I clarify something?
You certainly can.
This is for non-agendized items, correct?
Probably should've said that, but it's not in the litany yet, so, okay. For non-agenda items, so if you're here for the new business, wait till that. Seeing no others, I'll close the open forum, and go on to old business which is none and new business. The first item is a public hearing for Jacob Murray, 4603 Hillvale Way North, a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building. Luke?
Actually, it's Max, we'll take this one.
Thank you Chair and Planning Commission, and good evening. Tonight before us, we have a request for a conditional use permit for an oversized accessory structure at 4603 Hillvale Way North, located south of 50th Street North and Ideal Avenue near the border of Lake Elmo. The zoning here is R4, middle-density housing, where oversized accessory structures are allowed via the conditional use permit process. With regard to the details of the request, the applicant here is looking to add a shed to their backyard that exceeds the maximum square footage requirements for accessory structures in the R4 district. Per the city code, sheds may be up to 120 square feet in the R4 district, whereas the applicant's shed is planned to be 180 square feet. The property as a whole is approximately 0.4 acres in size and contains a single-family home with an attached garage. Here we have a more detailed look at the applicant's plans to add an oversized shed. The applicant plans to use the shed primarily for residential storage, and you can see the shed would be located in the rear yard on the east side of the property. Based on the provided plans, the shed would not exceed height limits. Additionally, in the R4 district where this property is located, sheds are required to be at least five feet from side and rear property lines. Based on these plans, all setback requirements would be met. As a reminder, conditional use permits are subject to certain review criteria found in the city's ordinance. Here's a quick summary of the criteria we use in our evaluation. Compliance with the comprehensive plan, compatibility with zoning, no nuisance effects, traffic congestion or parking issues, adequate service by public services with no excessive costs incurred for public services and infrastructure, minimal impacts to the environment and natural features. Specifically, for oversized accessory structures, additional criteria include that the lot cannot be further subdivided with the building on site, no pole barn construction is permitted, no individual doors may exceed 10 feet in height, and no commercial or industrial uses may occur within the structure. Staff finds that this conditional use permit request, that the general criteria of the ordinance has been satisfied as detailed in the staff report on file. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the following conditions: the accessory structure meets setback in height requirements, and the accessory structure shall not exceed 180 square feet in size. As a reminder, this is a public hearing, and the applicant is here, and I believe is here in attendance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Max?
None.
None.
Then I'll offer the opportunity to the applicant, if they wish to come forward to make any statement. Not seeing a motion, I'll open the public forum. Remember the rules for the process that I described before, and I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment on this particular motion, please come forward. I'll offer a second time. Anyone wishing to make comment on this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back, and any final comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for an oversized accessory building at 4603 Hillvale Way North.
Someone move? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, motion passes. Next order of business is a public hearing for the Tanner's Lake LLC, Tanner's Lake Planned Unit Development, preliminary plat and final plat of Tanner's Lake Second Edition, and the site plan for the Tanner's Lake Mixed-Use Development. Luke?
Thank you Chair. So, we have in front of us two different requests, yet they are related. So the first request is a rezoning of approximately eight acres to create the new Tanner's Lake Planned Unit Development, and the second request is a development, excuse me, a proposal, which I'll cover in the next slide. So the location of this PUD, again, the zoning, the proposed zoning is, as shown on the screen there, maybe a little difficult to see, the pink dashed lines there, so the area is bounded to the north by 4th Street, to the east by Tanner's Lake, to the south by Hudson Boulevard, and to the west by the city of Oakdale's border with Maplewood. The purpose of this rezoning is that it would enable flexibility from conventional zoning standards, or in other words, it will essentially facilitate, help facilitate redevelopment of this area, given that this, there's very unique characteristics of this property, it's a very irregular shape, and the flexibility that I'm talking about, for example, is like parking requirements setbacks. So in exchange for the flexibility provided through the PUD, there would be public benefit derived from requiring higher design standards and pedestrian and site amenities, for example. The standards can be found in the full PUD, which is included in the meeting packet, and additionally, the Tanner's Lake PUD will help guide redevelopment of the area, it kind of, or sort of serves as a plan for cohesive development, redevelopment. Some general background on PUDs, as stated in the city's ordinance, PUDs are an alternative to conventional zoning and development approaches to encourage innovations and development, promote better housing, recreation and shops, utilize land in an efficient manner, create aesthetically pleasing development on land that has special features based on its geography, topography, size, and shape. So the current zoning of this area, it's really a mixture, so there's some parcels that are zoned, medium-density residential, so R3, high-density residential, R5, and specifically that's the Lakeview Terrace property, and the remainder of the site is community commercial, our C2 zoning district. So I would like to note that rezoning of the Lakeview Terrace property to this PUD will actually help bring the site into compliance with the zoning standards, and again, for example, parking and setback requirements, but beyond that, nothing changes for the Lakeview Terrace to continue functioning as a condo building. Any questions about the PUD before I move on to the redevelopment? Nope, okay.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify, so we are bringing in the existing multifamily building into the overall PUD.
That's correct. Lakeview Terrace is included within this proposed PUD.
Ask any questions?
At the time of public forum, we'll let you.
Moving on to the redevelopment proposal here, the area is a certain property that's within the PUD, the proposed PUD, and that is shown on the screen there, it's, the property is outlined in the turquoise color. Current site conditions, this is a vacant site, it previously contained commercial use, as much of the redevelopment site is asphalt, aging asphalt. Request details for this proposal, Tanner's Lake LLC, so that's the entity behind the development, they are proposing a mixed-use development, that is a 126-unit apartment building on the north side, so that would be located immediately west of the Lakeview Terrace site. A commercial building, so when we say commercial building, we're likely concessions, kayak rentals, those types of functions or uses that would be an amenity to the lakefront there, and that structure would be immediately south of Lakeview Terrace, and then additionally, there will be 12 rental townhome units, sited on the south or southern portion of this redevelopment site. I would like to point out that all the units, both the apartment and the rental townhomes, would be market rate, so, or in other words, that those are not subsidized units. So here's a look at the proposed plat of Tanner's Lake Second Edition, so this is essentially a re-subdivision of numerous lots that currently exist, they were platted many years ago, and just the way that the screen lays out, or the image lays out on the screen, it's actually rotated, so rotated counterclockwise 90 degrees, so the north arrow is pointing to the left side of the screen. The plat proposes two buildable lots, so the first lot is on the north side, and that would contain the proposed apartment building and commercial building. The second lot, to the south, would contain the rental townhomes, and then there would be an outlot that is also created, and the outlot is, it covers a portion of Tanner's Lake that would be conveyed to the city for continued ownership. I would like to note that the developer will need to work with two private entities, or two private owners, to acquire rights in order to finalize this plat for formal approval. So here's a look at the site plan, again, I want to note the orientation, it's turned 90 degrees counterclockwise. The access to the site, well, they will utilize the existing access at the intersection of Highway 120 and Innovation Boulevard, so Lakeview Terrace will continue to have access to 120 via easement, basically the existing drive that connects Lakeview Terrace to Highway 120 will be shifted south. Now, the apartment building will have a mid-block access off 120, and that would feed directly into their underground parking, or one section of their underground parking, and this mid-block access will require Minnesota DOT approval, because Highway 120, of course, is a state road. There's another access to the underground parkings on the east side of the apartment building. I just want to note some of the key features here, like I mentioned, the apartment building on the north side, there's the proposed commercial building here, directly south of Lakeview Terrace, and then the townhomes south of that. For the commercial, or excuse me, the apartment building, a couple setbacks I want to note, and when I say setbacks, that's the distance of the proposed building to the property lines, and the majority of this building is setback 25 feet from the east property line here. Now, there is a small portion of this building where the cursor is, and that's proposed, a little bit closer as you can see, and that will just have to be, that will have to meet the 10-foot setback requirement of the Planned Unit Development, the PUD. So amenities, as mentioned, there's that commercial building, it's geared towards water activities. There will also be a boardwalk there along the lake, and then a plaza area, and the city is requiring that an easement be created to allow the public to utilize the boardwalk and the plaza area. For parking, there will be two levels of underground parking, plus surface parking, so the ratio shakes out to be one to one, so that's one parking space per bedroom unit, so 157 spaces. Again, the apartment building is 127 dwelling units, but there's more, there's a mixture of bedrooms there, so one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. There will also be 10 spaces reserved for the commercial building, and then seven additional spaces for the townhomes, and that's surface parking, so the townhomes will also have their own driveways and garages. Here's a look at the landscaping plan, and the proposed number of trees at 67, and the sodding on non-improved areas meets the PUD requirements, however, understore plantings such as shrubs will need to be added to the landscape plan. For site lighting, the developer will need to provide a photometric plan that complies with our ordinance requirements, and then for stormwater management, there's two different systems here, there's going to be one in the centrally located, it's an underground infiltration system, and then there's a second stormwater infiltration basin to the south, located south of the townhomes where the cursor is. Little bit difficult to see there on the screen, but here's a look at the apartment building elevations, so in the top left, that's the north elevation facing 4th Street, top right, that's the south elevation, the middle image is the east elevation, elevation facing Lakeview Terrace, and then the bottom image is the west elevation facing Highway 120. So to assist with the review of the apartment building's design, the city had HKGI, they're a design and planning firm, they evaluated the apartment building's design for conformance with the PUD that's proposed, and their analysis, which is included in the packet, concluded that the building meets the PUD criteria with a few exceptions. I just want to summarize a few of the recommendations here. The first is to enhance the two entrances at the south end of the apartment building to function as the primary entrance. The second recommendation is to extend the elements that distinguish the ground level floor, one level up, basically to increase the building's contrast that is visible from the street, and their other recommendation is to incorporate additional design elements on the west facade, which is the public-facing facade. So just a couple more elevations on the next slides. So here is the commercial building. I would like to note again, just that the building will serve as that lakeside amenity, and again, think kayak rentals, concessions, but we're not talking motorized watercraft, to be clear. So the top right image there is the east facade, so that would face Tanner's Lake, and then the bottom right image is the west facade. Here's a look at the townhome elevations, the top right is the west facade, again, facing Highway 120 and the live-in hotel, and then the bottom right is the east elevation that would face Tanner's Lake. So finally, here's a cross-section of the proposed apartment building, so on the left side is the proposed apartment building, there on the right, that structure is Lakeview Terrace, and then further right yet is Tanner's Lake. Due to varying elevations of the site, this is the most average cross-section of the area, if that makes any sense, and in the upper right-hand image, that's a perspective, just gives you an idea of how the commercial building and townhomes would look if you were at the southwest corner of Lakeview Terrace, looking south-southeast. So with all that said, staff recommends approval of the proposed Tanner's Lake Planned Unit Development, the preliminary plat, final plat, and site plans, subject to conditions that are found in the resolutions. Bear with me, there's a number of conditions I'll read through, and I'll try to summarize them as best I can. So the first resolution is the plat resolution on page 64. So there are nine conditions here, number one, approval of the Tanner's Lake PUD, number two, execution of a development agreement, number three, approval of the site civil plans by the city engineer, number four, outlot A of the plat shall be conveyed to the city, number five, the developer must perform vegetative restoration of the shoreline in accordance with our shoreline ordinance, number six, an easement or agreement shall be recorded for public access to the boardwalk and plaza area as shown on the plans, the easement area must also dedicate a minimum of 10 parking spaces near the commercial amenity building for public use, number seven, the developer satisfy park dedication requirements by providing a city, the city a payment, and number eight, the final plat must be revised and comply with the city attorney's plat opinion, and the developer must adhere to the city attorney's recording instructions, number nine, permits and approvals must be obtained from the watershed district and from the Minnesota DOT. Moving on to the second resolution, and that is the site plan resolution, page 67 of the packet. Bear with me again, 11 conditions here, number one, approval of the Tanner's Lake PUD, number two, execution of a development agreement, number three, approval of the site civil plans, number four, update the apartment building's exterior design to comply with Section 5 of the Tanner's Lake PUD, so including items 6, 8, 9, and 10, number five, revise the site plan to show the locations of exterior trash enclosures and their methods of screening, number six, the site plan must be revised to show any rooftop equipment, ground-level utilities, external loading areas, and their methods of screening, number seven, update the landscape plan to include understore plantings, the plan must be certified by a licensed landscape architect, number eight, approval of the site civil construction plans for water sewer and storm sewer, number nine, approval from the fire department for the proposed hydrant locations and fire department connections, number 10, a photometric plan must be provided that complies with the city's ordinance, and then number 11, approvals from the watershed district and Minnesota DOT. So as a reminder, this is a public hearing, I also want to acknowledge that the city received a couple written comments regarding this proposal, and those were forwarded to the planning commission for review and consideration. I know there's a lot of folks here in the audience who are probably wondering how this process is going to play out, so I just want to talk next steps. So the role of the planning commission, as you know, is, you are an advisory body, you make a recommendation only to the city council, nothing is formally decided tonight. Following the planning commission, there will be a city council meeting, and that will also be another public hearing, so neighbors who live within 500 feet of the site will be notified through a public mailing, or a mailing with the public hearing notice, and that city council meeting date, it's tentative at this time, because the developer has to work through the title, the land control of the redevelopment site. I know we have a couple staff members here, I'm looking to our community development director if there's any details, additional details that you want to cover, by all means, and the developer and their team are here in attendance, otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. First question I would have, something that's not mentioned anywhere in here, it may not be germane, but Perkins and Live-In, is there some consideration to fire department access to them and access to their facilities? Is that Live-In is mentioned, but Perkins was not?
Carlson's too.
Carlson's too, okay, yes. Other facilities down there, yes.
Because those facilities are, they're outside of our jurisdiction, those are actually within the city of Maplewood, it's beyond our jurisdiction here, beyond our review.
Good. Anyone else have questions for Luke?
I have a couple. Just clarifying, because I saw in one of the letters, no boat launch, you said no motorized boats, but like no public launch where I can bring my boat, back it in, drop it off, and move out.
That's correct, I'm just checking with it, yep. Checking with the developers team, and nothing to that effect is being proposed.
What is our code standard for multifamily parking?
We could bring those up, the multifamily, if you're proposing a multifamily structure through just conventional zoning, it depends on the number of bedroom units, but with, without this PUD, there's just no way that you would get the ratios to work here on this site, it's, we acknowledge as staff, we're doing this code update to modernize our parking regulations, other elements of our code, but, yeah, again, I can bring those numbers up, but they're exceedingly high, is the answer.
And I'm not inherently, I'm curious to see it, I'm not inherently opposed to one per bedroom, but I'm curious what that delta is, and how close are we to a public transit stop? Because I know that was mentioned in our staff report, that that's part of the consideration, but if it's a mile down Hudson Boulevard to the Greenview?
So Commissioner, the nearest public transit, I believe, is within about a quarter mile, the 3M campus, there's a couple bus stops there.
Okay.
What about the New Gold Line? How close is there going to be a stop from the Gold Line, or is that the 3M campus?
Looking to Andy if he could speak to that, he's...
Good evening, planning commission members, community development director, Andy Getzloff, just to verify Luke's correct about a quarter mile for local transit service, Gold Line is about .6 miles, horse apiece between the Greenway Station and the 3M Station. One thing too to keep in mind is that projects, including a significant amount of pedestrian improvements, trail on the south side of Tanner's Lake, a new grade separation over Highway 120, that'll also help people get to those other destinations with auto vehicle.
Thank you. I have a couple more. Did we receive a material board? These uncolored elevations are flat and hard to get a sense of what we're really going to see, I would like, I would have liked to have seen some elevated, not elevation, some renderings, some colored elevations, a material board, something to give us a sense of what's here, because quite frankly, I look at these townhomes and they just, they look flat and not appealing at all.
So for that question, I might have to defer to the developer.
But we haven't received anything, everything we've received is in the packet, is what you're saying?
Gray and white, there is, there was a materials page, it just, in terms of, yeah, being that, providing that color palette and really giving you an idea, it's just text.
Okay. And then I think my final one right now was, again, just a clarification, on the plat, condition six says that they must dedicate a minimum of 10 parking spaces near the commercial amenity building for public use. We're not asking to dedicate, we dedicate those to the city, we're simply asking that these are kind of allocated, reserved, always kept open for public use, but they are still privately owned.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Anyone else have any questions for Luke?
I guess I have a question. I don't really see any, where you've made any arrangements for the actual lake, this is, they have access to the lake, this is, they will be having, these 126 families will be having access to the lake, they will have, that is correct?
Yeah, so with that boardwalk and the plaza area, as one of our conditions of approval, just making sure that everyone, everyone in the public would be able to access the
Any other questions? At this point, I'll offer the opportunity for the developer to come forth and make some comments and answer Commissioner Campbell's question. Is the developer in-house? Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, members of the commission, thank you for having us tonight, we are excited to be here, we appreciate your time, we appreciate reviewing this project, we are very excited about coming to work in Oakdale and taking a site that's frankly seen better days, and we're hoping to create something that all the residents of Oakdale can enjoy and see and come to live, we're working on being good neighbors to everybody that is surrounding us, especially those at Lakeview Terrace, we have had one meeting with them and plan to have many more about what they would like from us in terms of helping to beautify that area and make it more appealing. Right now, as you probably all know, there's a lot of construction going on over there, there's a lot of containers parked outside and overgrown trees, and we're hoping to help that out and provide a wonderful place for people to call home.
Thank you. Questions for the developer?
Yes, I have a couple questions for the developer. You really haven't had any input as what, you know, you're almost treating the lake itself as if it's a pool, or, because you're going to have 126 families here using... itself as if it's a pool, because you're going to have 126 families here using this lake that is only 74 acres, and that's a lot of people. You know, it truly is. And I think you haven't considered that it's a living being type thing, and I just feel that this is way overbuilt for the situation that we're dealing with. You know, I live on the lake. My address is 508 Lynbrook Avenue. We're on the other side of the lake, and I just think this is ridiculous. You know, I truly do. I'm sorry, but I respectfully say this, but I just think this is way over, I think we're just way over on this deal, because it's such a tiny area, and we're going, and it's just going to just destroy the lake. It is truly going to destroy the lake. I don't think that's been even considered.
Yes, we have, and that's why we're going to restore the shoreline, put the native plants back in.
Talking about the lake itself, it's 74 acres. White Bear Lake is 2,416. Now, I could see this on a lake, but not on a 74 acre lake. This is a very small lake for 126 families.
But with existing homes?
And, well, the existing homes of 50, 50 homes that are basically around the lake to begin with, exactly. So, I mean, we're talking, it's going to be just unbelievably, it's going to tear up the shorelines all along the lake, because you're going to have 126 families using that lake, because it's so accessible. And it's a rental situation, and I'm sorry to say that rental people don't have the same feeling that people that actually have skin in the game, they own the place. So I just really think this is outlandish. I just think it's not a good idea. I can see possibly with the townhomes, but when you're talking 126 people stuffed in a corner, and just the roadways, you know, to get these 126 people out on Century, or where are they going to go? I mean, this is, it's just unbelievable to my scope. I can't, I can't believe anybody would even think to do this. I can't even believe we're even reviewing this, to be honest with you. My feelings.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. You guys could hold your applause, please. What's the average rental of one of these market rate units?
Studios, studios were between 900 and 1,100, all the way up to 2,800 for three bedrooms, and the townhomes are proposed to be between 3 and 3,500 a month.
Yeah, so standard market rate?
Yep.
You know, these are, this is high-quality housing. You know, multifamily housing is, whether people agree or not, it's needed. I myself own multifamily property. It's amazing to me, the rates that multifamily gets right now. And I think, when I hear you say, you know, folks that kind of live here, kind of alluding to them not taking care of it or not caring, when you're paying $2,000 a month, it takes a certain kind of individual to be able to afford that kind of rent. This is not, yeah, these are, I'm at a loss. I also think there's...
Hear me out.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but maybe if the commission can just take a step back. This is the opportunity for gathering additional information, and the deliberation can occur after, after we close the public hearing, would be my suggestion, so.
So I have a couple of questions for you, specifically on the building. Did you, do you have any materials tonight that we can look at, any colored materials to give us a better sense of what these buildings will look like?
I don't have any materials, but my architect can show some images of the direction we're trying to head with this.
Perfect. Yep, that would be great. Have you given any, I mean, I'm concerned about this mid-block driveway directly into your building. I'm just worried about somebody making the wrong turn, and then they're stuck. So I would encourage us, or encourage you to consider, you know, a hammerhead of some sort to, if somebody goes in there, how can they get back out? I think that's all I got right now. I'm going to flip through my notes, and I'm sure I'll have more for you at some point.
Now, the waterfront here, that's going to be designed as a boardwalk and not a public beach, correct?
Correct.
So there is no swimming or activities that are going to be done here? Those would be done on the Tanner's Park on the other side of the lake?
Yes, there'll be railings. You have to stay on the dock. It's not a layout a lawn chair and go swimming in the lake.
Any other questions for the developer?
I agree with Chris about that entrance, the second entrance. That is a hugely busy road. Coming around that curve, it goes from two lanes to one lane approximately at the same point. Have you had any discussions with MINDOT yet, as far as the availability of doing that?
We have started the conversation with them. It's a slow-moving process. We are looking at other options.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One of the option, the main option, though, is keeping open the Innovation Road exit, directly opposite Innovation Road as the main access point, correct?
You'll have to show me on the map. I can't...
The stoplight that goes into 3M, that's Innovation Road.
Yes.
Going east from there is currently the access point to pretty much everything that used to be there or is there. That's the one that you guys are working with MINDOT the most to keep open, correct?
We're working with them. With the way we have the access set up, which is mid-block, they're trying to figure out what they're going to end up doing with that road, and how that plays into how our access is going to work, whether they're planning to do reconstruction there, or to leave it, or we're trying to figure out what their plans are, so then we can adapt and make it work the safest way possible for both traffic and pedestrians.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, then.
Thank you.
At this point, I would be opening the public hearing. I read the instructions before, so we would like to try and keep the time limit to 20 minutes total and three minutes per person. So at this point, I open the open forum. Anyone having comments, please come forward. That's so the camera can pick you up correctly.
It's your best angle.
Okay. I'm Florence Buggerd. I live at 329 Geneva Avenue North, Unit 217, West Side. And actually, I have, I have one thing, based on some of the discussion earlier, is that has an environmental impact study been conducted for this site and the plans? If not, I would recommend one.
Please get that recommendation to Luke, and he's keeping a list of some of the open questions, and he'll try and get the answers back to you.
Okay, so I, reading from the information on the agenda, I'm really kind of puzzled. Maybe you can help me out. So on page 17, it defines this PU D, is that what it is? Yeah.
Plan, unit development.
Plan, unit development, as a list of parcels and a portion of a parcel that begins with 31 and ends in 64, and it describes it as 3.25 acres of vacant land. And then earlier tonight, I heard something about eight acres, and then on, on page 25, it says, there's a reference to approximately 6.5 acres, including Lakeview Terrace. So I'm just, I mean, I've seen the pictures. I'm just wondering if somebody could clarify those numbers.
Luke, do you want to address that, or wait for the list of questions?
I think generally, this is an opportunity for us to hear, and we don't need to give responses. It's just to get feedback. Would you agree, Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the feedback will be later, is that what you're saying?
Luke, we'll get back with you on it.
Yes.
But not right now. I only have three minutes.
So generally, in these types of hearings, the audience gives, gives your comments to the, to the chair and the board, and it's up to us to listen to those, but generally, we don't give feedback.
Okay. I'll just list my concerns, or that, my confusion, I should say. Okay. Then regarding the rezoning, according to your current Oakdale MNDOT maps GIS diagram, Lakeview Terrace is zoned A4, is that correct? Middle density residential. And the document states that the rezoning is from R3, excuse me, it's R, not A, R3, R5, and C2. So, I mean, I just wonder if there could be a clarification there also, because I'm confused about that lack of consistency. Another thing that I noticed is on page 19, there's a reference to decommissioning the north entrance. So that's part of Lakeview Terrace common property, and I'm wondering how that is possible? Is it that the city believes the north entrance, approves the north entrance to be closed? Or what is going, what is that about? And then I'm wondering, on page 28, what are the very heavy lines? You have, can you show me page 28? Or you could get back to me. I'm just wondering what those very heavy lines are.
They're curb lines.
They're what?
They're curb lines.
Curbs, okay, that's what I was wondering. It seems like a lot of curbs in a little, in a little space, and I went, how easy it's going to be to get around in there, but that's, it looked like curbs. I was just wondering, okay. And then, could somebody clarify, and I can guess what this is, but maybe you can clarify, what is the vacated alley on page 30? And who is owning that right now? The city of Oakdale or Lakeview Terrace?
Yeah, Luke, we'll have to get back to you on that, because we don't know, we don't have the ownership list on where the property lines are.
Okay. Okay, and then on the, on the diagram that I've seen, it shows that the parking in, at Lakeview Terrace, which now has two sides, we can park next to the building, and we can park on the other side. I mean, there's, there's a driving area in the middle, and then there are two rows of parking. And I'm only seeing on the diagrams, one row of parking, and I'm wondering if somehow the space is different there, or it just wasn't drawn in, or, I'm not sure. So I'm just wondering, I guess my ultimate concern is, is there less parking overall in the Lakeview Terrace condominium land? Okay, I think I've probably burned my three minutes, so I will stop here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to come forward to ask questions or make comment?
I have a website, so.
All right. Just give your name and address.
Sure. My name is Matthew Conan. I live at 329 Geneva Avenue North. I will be facing the intended apartment building. And what kind of brings me here is, when I saw the plans on there, and I saw all the developments that are about to take place, initially, I thought, this is great. I think everybody here would agree that this area has seen better days, definitely. And I think most of the intended buildings on there look quite nice. It's a nice idea to have a townhome, maybe something down there. I think everybody remembers, maybe not me, because I didn't live up here back then, but Toby's on the Lake, things like that, that were actually nice areas to go down there, as sort of a destination. But as I take a look at things, and I take a look at all of the things that are going to be placed on the property, it sort of made me think, and I kind of thought about, well, this kind of looks like you're trying to put 12 dozen eggs in a single saucer. And that being said, it made me think that this request itself is unrealistic, given the space available for the intended apartment building. And when you take a look at all those parcels, and all the things that are around there, all that stuff, it begs the question, you know, what's the odd man out here? In the entire property, what is, what is the odd man out? And for me, the odd man out is this building that was built in 1970 that's on the lake. Everything else is going to be built around it, and then there's the odd man out. And it makes me get to the question, and I will get to this question, but I need to elicit a couple of other points, that this seems to be a very similar game plan when it comes to developments across, not just the United States, but Minnesota. There's a lot of examples of this, even in downtown Stillwater over the past 10 years. And that's this. We have a very interested private developer, has very altruistic intention to build something very nice. City, state, they're going to see some parallel goals and intentions with this. And with that, what ends up happening is the city and the private developer work together, and then pretty soon, there's going to be a very loose interpretation of eminent domain laws. And I can see Lakeview Terrace having eminent domain laws used against it. They call it eminent domain abuse. And eminent, and with that, Lakeview, the odd man out here, suddenly is going to be condemned. Market value prices are going to crash. We get a fair market value based on lower prices, and suddenly, this very valuable parcel of land, that is where Lakeview is, is suddenly going to be developed by the city. The city and the developers shake hands over this. Everybody else goes away, and suddenly, you can build whatever, whatever else you really want to build on this. Now, this is the long view. Some people can say that this is, this is kind of paranoid, but I've seen this occur every place I've lived. Chicago, Detroit, Lansing, Michigan, Flint, Michigan, Stillwater, Minnesota, Oakdale. I've seen it even going on in Maplewood right now. And I would want this to be thought about. I want this to be studied, only because if we can get some kind, I hesitate to ask anything about the government guarantees, ever.
If I could, you are over your three minutes, so if you could wrap it up quickly.
All right. Then here's the thing. I feel like we're about to get emdoed, eminent domained, and if that is the case, okay, well, we have things we can do with that, but what protections do we, as people who work at Lakeview, or not work at, I'm sorry, live at Lakeview, what guarantees do we have that eminent domain and its, the interpretations of those laws are not going to be used to condemn the property and make us all move, so something else can be developed? I guess that's, that's my main question there.
Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else who pushes to come forward?
Hi, commissioners. Thanks for letting me speak for a few minutes.
Your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. Tony Dubay, 329 Geneva, Unit 418. Mr. McClanahan, I have a series of questions. Should I just give those to you as a point of clarification? Should I just give those to you after, or?
You can voice them, and then give them to them, yes, please.
Okay. First question is, why is Lakeview Terrace being included in the PUD, given it currently has appropriate zoning and land use designations? Keep firing away?
Yes, please.
Okay. Why is the commercial property not being deeded to the city, if it's to be a public platform, or a public amenity? And who's going to operate this public amenity? What is the actual usable area of the redevelopment site that's being used in the density calculations? And I guess tied to that, is Lakeview being included in the PUD for density calculations only? What will the commercial operations of this building entail? And if it remains privately owned, how will the city enforce the operation of the commercial building? Whatever, I think, Mr. Whatever, I think Mr. McClanahan had mentioned, some vending, some kayak rentals, things like that, who's gonna regulate that? Is, is the community, is the commercial building being included to avoid an amendment of the land use designation? Because the land use designation is mixed use, which includes commercial property, but a more appropriate, in my opinion, a more appropriate land use designation would be mixed use residential, which includes apartments and townhomes. Is Lakeview participation to be detailed in the development agreement? Because that part is really fuzzy to me, and I think to other residents of the building. Are any units being designated as affordable for 30% of the median income or anything like that? And finally, I guess I would echo the issues about traffic. The actual MN dot vehicles per day is 21,800, right at that intersection. That's a heavy use right now. I guess I would conclude by requesting that this, that approvals be tabled until we have further clarity on the project. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward, please?
Thank you. Carrie Crinkie, 421 Gentry. So a couple things, actually quite a few things, I have a list, and I'll be happy to forward it to you, Luke. So number one, regarding the questions, how will we all hear what the responses are? Is there gonna be something sent to all of us? I'm not clear how we're going to even hear what the responses are.
It's, and maybe I should clarify too, it's not that we can't give answers, but generally, this is an opportunity for these types of boards to just hear your feedback, so.
So we're not a participant in at least understanding?
It's not a debate forum, is the main point.
Okay.
We don't have the information to debate you on it, anyway.
Okay. Just asking how we're gonna all hear, because certainly, it's of interest to all of us.
I'm sorry, excuse me, but couldn't we have, the people have the answers for the people that are gonna be building this thing, have these answers for them, they're sitting right there, we could have, we could have a back and forth on that.
There are too, there are too many questions of too many varied things that have to be looked at by people that come up with a valid answer, is my guess.
Okay.
And I would rather not be given, and if, I would not get, want to give out invalid information.
I, I'm in line with Alice, I wouldn't want this to be, this is not the venue to hash all of that out.
What would be the venue?
If that's, if that's something that we think needs to happen, then I think we either table or we deny, and it's up to the applicant to decide if he wants to meet, if they want to meet with Lakeview Terrace. That's not our, that's not within our purview to decide. We have, we have an application before us, we hear their-
But this is an open forum for them to get answers for these things, and we're just, and we're sitting here doing nothing.
This is an open forum for them to give their feedback.
Okay, but they're asking questions-
Would I be wrong?
-that are available, and nobody's answering them, and like she says, when are, and when are we gonna find this out?
And also, for, in order for us to make a valid decision tonight, these are some good questions that I would like to have answers for, too, to be able to make a decision.
Right.
So it'd be nice to know some of these as well.
We are a community, and I thought that that's what happens, you ask us for our feedback, and then we should have also the respect to have responses to that. Whether it be tonight, or another evening, or another time, we would welcome, I'm within 500 feet, our house is, I would welcome the opportunity, and I would say that every single resident on the lake should be afforded that same opportunity, because there will be people, an additional probably 300-ish people, that will have a population or access to the lake, so therefore, it's going to impact everybody on the lake, so it seems only fair that everybody has that opportunity.
Exactly.
All right, so a couple questions. Interestingly, because years ago, I'm sorry, Sir Campbell, if I offended anything that you-
It wasn't directed at you, it was on the dais.
Okay, thank you. Years ago, I know that the city of Oakdale had talked a lot about ensuring that that space was used as an entrance to, you know, a grand entrance to Oakdale from the south side, similarly to what they were doing, you know, when they built Hy-Vee and all the rest over on the west side. And it was a place for, you know, restaurants and different things. The city purchased that land, if I'm not mistaken, so the city owns the land. Clearly, the more high density we have there, the more tax base you guys have, so I can see where there would potentially be interest. So I just wanted to state that from my perspective. I'm curious, who is Tanner's Lake LLC, is that the name of your organization? Also curious, a question, do you have any other, and I know I shouldn't be looking back because I'm not sure who's answering questions, but are there any other properties that you have that we as, you know, residents could see? I know there's a lot of questions, what's this gonna look like? Maybe there's some examples of properties that you already own and have built that we could take a look at. I have four main topics, environmental concerns, population density, development, and traffic. Happy to submit my questions. So from an environmental perspective, I think it was already mentioned, was there an environmental study done? And if not, there certainly should be. What are the possible water quality impacts? Any fish, wildlife impacts? Who absorbs any of the additional costs to manage the water quality? We've certainly had a water quality issue, it is continuously managed, so who's gonna manage any of those costs? Surface runoff management, how will that be managed? State regulations regarding the shoreline, are you guys requesting any special variations? I couldn't quite get that from the conversation. There was a little conversation or talk, anyway, that you're gonna restore the natural shoreline, I'm not sure what that means, but certainly that would be of interest. From a population perspective, I completely agree with you, we're 74 acres, whether they have access directly in front of the townhomes or from the apartments, there will be a boardwalk, and so it's very easy, everybody will have access. And it's not that we don't want people to have access, but I will tell you, after living on the lake for 20 years, there is, there has definitely been shoreline erosion. We have a 10 mile an hour speed limit that is not enforced, in fact, I could show you a video today, of them racing up and down the lake, we have shoreline erosion. Their death, whether they're gonna, they can certainly get boats, get on that lake, so, you know, just a number of questions wrapped around that. So from a population perspective, was there a population density study conducted? What generally should we see from a 74 acre lake in terms of population? So that would be of interest. From a development perspective, I couldn't quite tell how tall the apartment complex is gonna be, and if that's, if you're asking for any exceptions from a development perspective. I would be curious, what are specifically all the proposed lake amenities? You've talked about a few, but we certainly would want to know all of them, based on my earlier comments. Is any of the development considered Section 42? I'd also be very curious, you're talking about some of the baseline pricing, how does that compare to some of the apartment pricing of the new apartments that are just going in, in Oakdale? So what is some of that comparison, where do we stand there? And will, from a traffic perspective, I think it was mentioned a little bit, but have you conducted a traffic analysis? That would be critical, because yes, it is heavily congested, it is, can get quite dangerous, even coming off of 4th Street, which brings up, will there be any access to 4th Street? Doesn't appear to be that way, from what I can tell, but will there be? Without any, you know, without any finalized plans, it's hard to know. So those were just a few of the questions, I have more, and happy to submit them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Tom Smith.
Enter the microphone, please, so it's recorded, so he knows where to send it.
Tom Smith, here to speak for my son, Grant Smith, 329 Geneva, 309, Unit 309. I'll be real quick, questions I have. I did not note any guest parking for the 150, in the, for the big apartment building. I can't imagine that we're gonna have everybody park underground in an outdoor, in a building, so there's been no common sense. It's my, my observation. No common sense applied to where the guests are gonna stay when they come, if we're on a lake, we're going to have guests. Easement roadway, there's a, the roadway on the south entrance to 329 Geneva, that's said by easement, who's gonna pay and maintain that roadway in the future? That should be well lined out and built to county specs, so that the county or whoever can maintain that roadway. So you'll want to make sure you include that in your plan. The, the traffic concern here, I think, is not, certainly you have a problem at the light, at Innovation Drive, but it would appear that if we have congestion at Innovation Drive, that everybody's gonna drive through Lakeview Terrace's parking lot to exit, as it on 4th Street, that north street, and then they won't be able to make the right or left turn, because there's no light there, so they're gonna drive through the neighborhood. So I think you're, you've got a traffic pull problem that you really need to study, because I can see where you'd make a left out of your apartment basement, make a left through our parking lot, and then end up someplace where you can't get out. So if you don't have traffic control, we need to talk about that. How are you gonna limit occupancy in that apartment building? 157 spots, most of us live in twos or threes. What if we have, if we have multiple units? The way to make your rent is to put more people in, lowers the per person cost. Lakeshore, it would appear the planned unit development has enough footage of Lakeshore for a marina permit. Are you gonna put that in your planned unit development guidelines to prevent a marina from being built there? And then, if the boardwalk runs to the edge of the Lakeview property, what are we gonna do to maintain privacy for the Lakeview residents at the end of that boardwalk? And then the last thought I had, public transit, overflow traffic, overflow parking, is the city ready in the future, if we undersize this, to get into a parking permit situation like we have in Minneapolis or St. Paul, the parking's so restricted? That's my questions, thank you.
Hello, Scott Malcolm, 439 Gentry Avenue North in Oakdale. I want to thank the Commissioner on the sense of population, how it really impacts those of us that are lake home owners. I, I think it's really, really crowding the lake. I don't feel like there's enough information for this to move forward yet at this time. I think a lot of the issues have been identified, overuse of the lake, parking issues, first red flag is when we have to look at what our rules are now and changing them, lessening them to make something work, to make the parking work for that facility. I think that should be a red flag right off the bat, and we should not lower those numbers. I have to agree with the fellow who was just speaking, typically, in those kinds of prices, you've got two working individuals and two cars each for those apartments, and that's just for the base of it. And it's just, I agree with the fact that something needs to be done with the area. I think this is just the wrong thing. There's other things that can be done, that's just not the right place for 126 unit with 12 townhomes. Even if it was property that was owned, I just don't see where this is a benefit to those citizens of Oakdale that are here right now. I just don't see how that benefits them. I understand the tax base, but I also understand the expense that goes with it. We already have a burdensome problem with two lanes on a curve, coming down to one lane, right it forth. I mean, there is some serious work that has to be done, and just trying to imagine 126 apartments and the people that come with it, in a rental type environment. And I know that there's a lot of wonderful renters, I've been a renter myself, and I also know that as a renter, I'm not quite as concerned about either the property or the environment I'm in, if I'm leaving it. When I live there and I'm there and going to be there, it's like, ugh, this is my home. Just a little bit different, not totally, as a landlord, I understand that there's profit to be made, I'm just not sure that the advantages, I understand developers, it's a great site, by God, it's a lake, and that opens up a lot of things, but it's a little lake, big pond, little lake. And for those of us surrounded, I'd have to say, when it comes down to that 500 foot rule for inviting people, I think it should include all the homeowners on that lake, because it impacts them all so much. Okay, thank you.
We've, we've definitely exceeded the 20 minutes, so just a second. So any further comments, I'd like to make sure that you are aware that we don't want duplication of your, of the questions, and I'll let the developer make a comment first before I recognize you, sir.
Is that all right if I make a comment?
Certainly.
Everyone here tonight, thank you all for coming. My partner and I have spoken with your board, clearly, the information is not all to you guys. I would like to offer to host, multiple times, we can all sit down and talk through and answer every one of your concerns individually. You can email me, we can set up a time to sit down together, whatever is convenient for all of you, but I would like to get all of your concerns addressed. Thank you.
Hopefully, the microphone picked that up, we'll see for the minutes.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Ryan Schrader, my wife and I own a unit at Lakeview Terrace, Unit 204, 329 Geneva. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, I had a nice little speech, but given the comments that have already been made, I'm just gonna try to hit the high points. Initially, this has been mentioned, but the reason for the PUD really is to allow you to violate the height setback in parking requirements. And if it was just a little bit, that'd be maybe okay, but it's by a lot. Just as an example, the building of Lakeview Terrace, from its property line with the development parcel, is set back about 70 feet. That's an appropriate setback. This is proposed at eight. The building is two stories higher than Lakeview Terrace, about 25 feet taller, I don't think everybody really understands that. The Innovation Road access, there wasn't an overlay presented that shows where the access is now, where it will be later. I don't think everybody understands that, I'm not sure if you folks understand that, but basically, you're going from a signalized interchange, which is, or intersection, which is fine, that'll still be a signalized intersection, but from that point, there's an opportunity for Innovation Road to be a nice front door for all of the uses in that area. But you know what, what it will become with this proposal? Is this proposal will be the principal use, Lakeview Terrace will be an accessory use to the principal use, because we will be driving through their parking lot to get to our front door. I don't think anybody understands that. The massing of the building is extreme. I think as, as one drives north from 94, you'd probably be a few hundred feet south of where, where you can see Lakeview Terrace now, before you actually can see Lakeview Terrace, it'll be hidden by this building. And if I happen to live or own property on the west side of Lakeview Terrace, I'd be really concerned, because I won't be seeing any sunlight for a good share of the day. I would mention that the data, I apologize for this, but the data in the staff report is lacking in detail. Now, I know the reason for planning commission, I've worked with planning commissions for my entire career, and I know not all of this is a planning commission issue, but if I was on the planning commission, I would like to see in the staff report, how many studio units are there? How many ones, how many twos, how many threes? What's the construction cost of the project? What's the development cost of the project? What's the rental of the project? You don't know any of that. That hasn't been provided. And if you knew the construction cost and development cost, that would give you an idea of the aesthetics and the, the internal amenities within the project, but you don't know all that. What you have is a box on a, on a site plan. You don't really know any more than that. The impacts on Lakeview Terrace, they've been, they've been completely ignored, there's nothing in the staff report that talks about impacts on Lakeview Terrace, there's the one exhibit- There's the one exhibit that shows the, the two-story difference, but there's been no analysis about any of that, that, that should exist. The commercial property, everybody always gets excited about these little commercial properties. They talk about, oh, I can buy ice cream cones. But of course, all you can regulate is land use and, and the, the building, the, the structure. You don't know if ice cream cones turn into anything else six months from now or two years from now. And I would submit that I don't think the commercial building will provide any sort of benefit to either the existing neighborhood or the future one for that matter. There's an opportunity here to improve watershed management. That's been completely ignored. The, the developer is doing what he has to do to get his approval, which is, you know, to, to, to do the analysis, to go to the watershed, which he hasn't applied for the permit yet at the watershed. I assume he's waiting for after this meeting. But they only have meetings once a month, so either August seventh or September fourth are the two meetings he has, which is after the council approval. So I don't know if the council's proposed to approve something subject to an approval by the watershed. But there are opportunities to improve the water management in that entire area, been completely ignored. And at the end of the day, I, the, the, the townhomes, in my view, are probably fine, but the hundred and twenty-six units, you know, is too dense. It doesn't allow for appropriate setbacks according to your own zoning code. You know, the setbacks ought to be anywhere from forty to seventy feet. Can't possibly do that. The PUD allows you to violate that. And, and again, if it was, you know, if it was closer to what's reasonable, personally, I probably wouldn't object on, on that particular point, but it's nowhere near close enough for what it has to be. And, you know, essentially, you know, people talk about, oh, it's, you know, rotting, you know, blacktop or whatever. It's essentially a greenfield site because it's been vacant for so long. There's, there's not much that needs to be done. Well, I don't know if there's been an environmental analysis, so subject to that, I, I don't know if there has been or not, but subject to that, it's essentially a greenfield site. So you have, you have opportunities to do some interesting things, and I, you know, I just don't think this does that. So I'd, I'd ask either that the public hearing be continued or that you just table it to frankly allow staff and the developer to work closer with the neighbors because so far they really haven't. I mean, we had one meeting with a representative of the development team. He really couldn't provide answers to any of the questions we had, and we had, we had just a few minutes to, to look at the development, not to really have a conversation about it or even to, to consider it more than just a few minutes. And prior to a positive recommendation, more of that has to happen. You know, the developer made the offer. I think that has to happen before a recommendation out of this board. Thank you very much.
At that point, we've greatly exceeded our twenty minutes, but if there is anybody who thinks they've got something brand new and can limit it to three minutes?
I will be brief. I just have to say, I, I totally agree with everything that's been brought up. I do have concern about a couple of things, one of which is noise from the heating and cooling system that's gonna power this big building, that's gonna be on my side of the building. I know some of those heating, cooling systems are very noisy, been in other apartment situations. I love to have my windows open, and if I have to listen to that and it's gonna keep me awake at night, that's gonna be a problem. So that is a concern I have because it's gonna be running a lot of apartments. I also have a concern about possible damage to our older building for the construction of that building. They're gonna be going underground. There's gonna be, we've had, you know, the building of the Gold Line not too far from us, and, you know, I have concerns about what would be the mitigation if our building is, you know, we could have cracks forming, we have things happening in our building because of the construction of this very close proximity to our building. So that I have concerns about. And I think that's all I had that was different from everybody else, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. At this juncture, if there are any further questions, I would urge you to submit them in writing to Luke and hope, as the developer has offered, hopefully get some of your, your questions answered that way. So I think at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commissioners for any final question and discussion.
You can start.
All right, thank you. I have a few things. Did you wanna get in?
You certainly can. I was just gonna, one of the ideas here was that we had a list of questions and staff's been taking notes. We certainly can kind of walk through some of the high-level themes, provide some content and developer.
Do that tonight, you mean?
I think we could, we could do that as a high level if you'd like, if you'd like, Mr. Chair, planning commission members, and then we certainly, you know, one of the things is, well, when this project does and if it does, or when it does advance to council, we, we do prepare a summary of, you know, what, what questions were received, and we, that's an opportunity for us to address, as well as the developer mentioned, he's gonna be doing an independent reach out to set up another conversation. So either way you wanna do it, we, we're, we're happy to oblige planning commission here tonight.
Well, barring any refusals, I'd say it'd be good to answer as many questions as you have ability to do tonight.
All right, well, I'll defer to Luke to, and I think Max has been taking notes as well.
Like how you did that, Andy.
Yeah, we may not have everything, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to do as much as we can and go through it and, and at least to give some clarity, some clarity here, here yet tonight, and also for planning commission, because I'm sure some of these questions are the same ones that you have as well. So Luke, you wanna kick us off?
I'll, I'll do the best I can. We've got several dozen questions here, so one of the key, a reoccurring question was in environmental study. Has one been done? This size of a site does not trigger an environmental study? Confusion on the acreage there?
Luke, we did, do it, the city did a phase one, phase two environmental site assessment. A full-blown environmental impact statement isn't warranted for this site.
Okay, thank you, yes, thank you. Clarification on the acreage, so eight acres is for the PUD area, so that includes Lakeview Terrace and some other vacant parcels to the south. The redevelopment site itself is approximately three and a half, or, excuse me, three and one-quarter acre. And then if we're looking at the existing site conditions, we come up with six and a half acres, so that excludes some of the property that, that actually has part of the lake as platted as lots. So currently, Lakeview Terrace, there's questions on zoning. Lakeview Terrace, yes, that's R5, High Density Residential, that's non-conforming at, at this time. So there, there's many reasons for the PUD, including Lakeview Terrace and bringing Lakeview Terrace into compliance with the PUD zoning standards is one of those. Also, the, the PUDs, the, the planning commission is familiar with Helmo Station, Tarden Crossing, other PUDs that we have done. They serve as plans for the area so that, that these areas can develop in a cohesive manner. Decommissioning Fourth Street, there is an entrance there off Fourth Street right now, so that would be decommissioned, and so there would no be, there would not be a proposed access off Fourth Street to this site as, so as the proposal stands before you tonight.
There are two entrances off of Fourth Street currently, though. You're just decommissioning one that would be on the applicant's parcel.
On the applicant's parcel, yes, thanks for the clarification, so. Vacated alley, generally how alleys, or that happens when, when a alley is vacated, so it's split down the center line, one half goes to the adjacent property owner, and then the other half goes to the other adjacent property owner. So the, in this case, the half of the vacated alley is owned by Lakeview Terrace, and then the other half is, if I'm remembering correctly, then that's, I believe, city property or the privately owned, owned property there on site.
That probably would have been hap, happened before the last tenant vacated in one of the, one of those two properties that are in question, if I remember right, because that was a question I had, was the vacated property, and the question I have is where, where does that lie relative to the property lines? Question for you to answer later.
Thank you, sure. So eminent domain, I know that's, that was one of the big questions, protections for Lakeview Terrace. So it is clearly illegal in the state of Minnesota to use eminent domain for economic, excuse me, economic development purposes. That's very clear from the court rulings that we've had in the, in the two thousands. So several questions about the commercial building. So the, the city will not be owning, maintaining it as a private commercial use. The city will not have any say in, in terms of how it gets operated, and again, the, the city is not going, going to be operating that building. City regulate commercial buildings? Is Lakeview Terrace going to be a participant in the development agreement? So the development agreement is very specific to the, the proposed development, so the, the apartment building, commercial structure, and the townhomes only. So no, Lakeview Terrace will not be a participant in the development agreement. Affordable units, again, to be clear, both the apartment building and the townhome, rental townhomes, those are all market rate, so they're, it's not low income, it's not affordable, it's not subsidized. As proposed for traffic concerns, you know, was a, a traffic study done? So MINDOT did not require a traffic study. Obviously, it's a very high, highly traveled road. Someone had mentioned the, the traffic counts there, so, yes, MINDOT did not require a, a traffic study to be done. So who is Tanner's Lake LLC? It's, it's the developer here in, in the room. Stormwater management, those, that will be handled via two systems, so there's an underground infiltration system in the middle of the site, and then there's a infiltration basin on the south side of the site, so south of the townhome. So that, that will all have to be provided and reviewed and approved by the watershed district. So is population density, was there a study done? That's all part of our, wrapped into our comprehensive plan, the Met Council, the city has to work with the Met Council in terms of density studies. We had mentioned the, the lake amenities, exceptions to the height, that's where the PUD comes in, very similar to Helmo Station, where you have several multifamily structures going in there, Tarden Crossing, the, the PUD provides that flexibility. I wasn't quite sure on the, the question about the easement and the roadway, who will pay for it? This is all, once, after you exit 120, that's all private, private property, so it's, it's private entities managing the drives.
But that's not what you want. You want the public to take over that road.
Prevention of a marina, that, for that one, that, I might be mistaken here, but that sounds like it's some type of, some type of DNR approval that's, wouldn't have, the, the city wouldn't be involved there.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be allowed under the, under the shoreline or, or under the proof of a PUD.
There wasn't marina on there before.
No, it was, oh, down at the south side, yeah. Yeah, the south side. Was that in Maplewood, though?
Pardon me?
Was that in Maplewood?
No, it was not. It was, it was definitely Oakdale.
So, yeah, I, very briefly there, just went through questions and comments that I had written down, Andy.
At this point, I'd like to ask a question that.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of confusion as to the different jurisdictions that are involved, city, MINDOT, and the watershed district, and explain the differences as to who controls what aspects of some, for some of the questions they had.
Yes, good question, Mr. Chair. So we'll take the watershed district, so they are in charge of reviewing the stormwater, so the runoff, managing runoff, especially as it goes into the, dissipates throughout the area, the stormwater basins, the watershed district handles all that. MINDOT is the jurisdiction for moving around or relocating any accesses off Highway 120 or any signalization improvements there. And then the city, of course, is the, the jurisdiction who reviews the land use applications like we have before us tonight. Hopefully, that clarifies it.
A little more on the watershed district because they're the ones that control a lot of the lake, where, offset from the lake. And that, the recent change that we put forth, for the, I can't remember the wording, for the district around the lake. Shoreline, thank you.
So to clarify, it's the Minnesota DNR. They are the jurisdiction over public water bodies. So the city recently worked with the DNR to adopt shoreline regulations. So a lot of folks might not know that previous, previous to last year, there were no shoreline regulations in, in place that the city had, so we, we worked with the DNR, and we have a pretty robust shoreline regulation now that ensures certain setback requirements, vegetative restoration, other requirements to protect and, and restore the shoreline.
So there are five regulatory, including Maplewood, regulatory agencies that are involved in this whole area?
I'm not sure that Maplewood, the city of Maplewood, comes into play in this one.
No, but they're active participant in some of the businesses in the areas down in the south part of this, part we're talking about at least.
For...
And we have no authority with them.
There's a shared, there's an access through, I believe it's the, the Libin Hotel property, and that, that's all private property. That's something that one, one private property would work with the other private property.
Just pointing out how complex this is. You have any further comments on that? Or Andrew, you have anything?
Yeah, I, I think I, Luke captured pretty much everything on the list. There's questions about overall project and construction cost. That's not something that's typically the purview of the, of the planning commission to, to review in its decision-making process. There's a question about noise from, from heating, from heating and cooling, so obviously not something that we, we would, we anticipate as a concern, but the developer would need to meet the city's, city's noise ordinance, construction about, or question about construction and potential for damage. Any contractors the city would require to have the appropriate bonds in place if something did happen. This would be an area that we'd wanna look at a little bit closer. I mean, this is redevelopment. This is a former site, it's a tight area, it, you know, it's, it's difficult for projects like, like this. So we'd wanna make sure that we give that a closer look as we, as we move forward through the process. The only other questions I jotted on, I, I feel like the developer and the architect team can kinda maybe speak a little bit more like who you are, what your background is, what other projects have you done? Commissioner Campbell, I think you had some questions about the, the material palette and design. So that was a summary of the questions from the public we have, and if, if you, if you'd like, I think the applicant would be, would be amenable to coming up and addressing some of those other questions.
If you'd wish to come forward, sir.
Thank you again for having me back up here. So my name is Patrick McGlin. I own McGlin Partners. I'm a development agency focused on multifamily condominiums and apartments. The last ten years have involved thoughtful redevelopment of multiple areas in and around the Twin Cities. I've done everything from boutique condominium units in the city of Edina that ranged in price from a million dollars at the low end to three million dollars at the high end. I've done rural apartment building in Jordan, Minnesota, that's seventy-five units, all market rate. I've used the same contractor multiple times throughout my career. They've been in business over fifty years. I work closely with JLG Architects, who's here with me tonight. This will be the second project that we're doing together. I work with them because of their thoughtfulness and creativity, not designing the same box and just plopping it all over town. I don't want someone to be able to tell that I've built more than one project. I try to make them all unique and blend into their own environments. I like to work with cities. I like to work with people, create solutions for everyone. I think this is a unbelievable site. It's, it has a lot of opportunity to grow and prosper. And one, one thing that I do wanna mention about... And one thing that I do want to mention about the heating and cooling and the power usage on this building, we are very close to being, hopefully be able to certify this building as a net zero building. We're working towards that. We're looking at using geothermal heat pumps. We will not be using natural gas to power anything. We're putting solar panels on the roof. We would like to make as little environmental impact as possible with this project. If you all have any other questions for me or my team, we're happy to answer them. And I believe we have some images we can show you of finished levels of what we're guiding towards.
I do have a question about parking because there was some concern about that. I presume you or whomever the long-term holder of this building is ensures that there's enough parking for your residents, because if you don't have adequate parking, you don't have residents.
That is correct. I've done this in multiple cities, and most parking requirements need to be updated. We only have four three-bedroom apartments in here. Most of our units are one-bedrooms, alcoves and studios, and two beds.
And being a market-rate apartment, your rates are market rate. You are comparable to the other projects, the other new projects in Oakdale, Woodbury, the surrounding areas.
Yep. The property manager that is doing the project not too far from here, also in Oakdale, has managed other properties from before. I went to them, said, "What are you getting for rents? What are you seeing?" And I use that as my benchmark, adding a little bit because we got waterfront.
Just to clarify another, the questions they had earlier was, your market rate is not Section 8 compatible?
No.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question while you're up there?
Absolutely.
Long-term ownership of the commercial property, you're looking at as having it as a rental-type outfit, I assume?
We're looking to have it as an amenity.
Okay.
Amenity to our residents, amenity to Lakeview Terrace, amenity to anyone that lives on the lake, and frankly, the public. We would ultimately like to host food truck nights or have some type of event a few times a year in the summertime, whether we do an ice fishing thing in the winter, make it be a yoga studio in the wintertime when it can't be used in the summertime, but we're not looking at turning it into a Starbucks.
But is it going to be a rental-type business there for kayaks, canoes and things like?
We would bring someone in to potentially on busy weekends, say, "You can come in, bring your 25 kayaks and rent them out for the weekend." But they wouldn't be there full-time.
It sounds like it would be more appropriate to think of it as, as you said, it's an amenity for the residents that is not exclusive to the residents.
Correct.
Anyone can come in and...
And if someone wanted to rent it out and have a birthday party, we're open to that.
It's not real true commercial, like we, I think of the term "commercial use."
There's no storefronts.
There's no storefronts.
I think for zoning, that's why they're using that term, but I'm not looking at it as commercial. I don't think it's designed to look like commercial. I think it's designed to look like a boathouse.
Not necessarily a party room.
A clubhouse.
A clubhouse, yeah, that's a good term. Okay, thank you.
Bringing it back to the commissioners again, any further questions from any of the commissioners?
You had a list.
Well, I don't necessarily have questions, I have concerns. I appreciate Luke coming back with a lot of the answers to a lot of the questions. That was very helpful on my end. I have a big concern about the traffic access off of Highway 120. I think that's going to be a big issue for existing residents and all the new people. And then you have the public who are going to turn into there as well. Building materials, that could be answered, but that's part of how we make our decision here, what the building's, not necessarily the inside, we talk about what's on the outside being built. HKGI got a few recommendations. I don't see that incorporated in this at all. I would like to see those in there. I thought they had some good ideas, so I would like to see that. But lake impact is going to be huge, and I'm going to agree with you honestly. You're offering up 10 spots for the public to be able to use there. That means there's 10 people above, or 10 carloads could be, of people above and beyond 100 in all these apartments and rentals that are going to have use of that lake. Most areas of this lake, most areas of this lake size would be considered a no-wake lake, and I don't believe this one is a no-wake. I don't live on it.
We have a tenure.
It is, it looks good. But this is a lot more people on here, and I, so lake impact, traffic, the building materials could be used. I would, wouldn't be opposed to tabling this for tonight, but those are my concerns at this point, as far as for me to be able to prove this. That's all.
I've got some comments, good questions. Building materials, we've talked about, I'm concerned about that.
Something we could share.
Okay. Perfect, that would be great. As far as traffic goes, I hear the comments and the concerns, that's, road is not our purview. You know, we, I don't think it's right for us to deny a legitimate use on a piece of property for a roadway that we don't control. If the governing body of that roadway has said, "No traffic impact study is needed," we should defer to those experts. So that's my thoughts on that. As far as lake impact, I think there's a misunderstanding, at least to me, it seems like there's a misunderstanding of how this lake is going to be used. From everything that I see, you're building a boardwalk and a pier, and that's it. You've just told us that there's no permanent, you know, rental of watercraft or anything like that. It's an occasional use that may come up. So really, what we're talking about is people walking on effectively a sidewalk. I don't think you're getting residents that are, you know, accessing the lake at this location. It doesn't, you have no boat launch, you have, it doesn't appear that there's any access point into the water, you know, dedicated built access point. I can't say that somebody's not going to go through the shoreline and find their way in, but, you know, you're not creating an active amenity space. You're creating a pathway that somebody can walk by. You know, there were some comments about, well, we should notify the entire lake of this development. We simply can't do that. We have a code that tells us who we need to notify. We have to abide by that code. We don't get to just pick and choose, you know, "Oh, well, this is on the lake, so everybody needs to get notified." That's not how that works. And as far as population density, so I think this is an interesting point. So if I'm not mistaken, my data could be wrong, Lakeview Terrace has 74 units. Is that right? 76?
72.
Let's go 74, because we're in the middle.
72 is the correct answer.
Okay, well, I can't redo my math that quickly, but I've got 74. It's not going to change it that much. Based on the land area that Lakeview Terrace sits on, you have one unit per 1,059 square feet of lot area. The proposed development has one unit per 1,051 square feet of lot area. It is in fact less dense than Lakeview Terrace. So I think, I think it's just an interesting point, when we talk about there's concern about density, it is actually a less dense development than what is existing there.
It's five stories. I respectfully disagree with you. I don't, as far as they are building a pier on this thing, they've not mentioned that. It was, there is a pier on, along with that. So what comes with a pier is places to put boats and things like that.
Not necessarily.
Well, maybe, but maybe, obviously, you don't live on a lake, you don't know what this is all about. When you live on a lake...
I take offense to that. Just because I don't live on a lake doesn't mean that I don't need to, don't understand how a pier works.
Lee's got the floor right now.
Yeah, I do.
That she took from me, just as a point.
Well, okay. I respectfully say that this is the way, you don't understand the situation.
Don't tell me what I understand or not, Lee.
This is my time.
You took my time.
Oh, then finish, then finish.
You've taken it, go ahead.
No, go ahead, if you're not finished.
I will yield my time.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yes. They have had, they have a pier, and this is a unique situation because it is a lake. You know, we're not talking about a big piece of property with, this is an actual lake, it's a living body. So we are the stewards of this, and right now, you're putting all these, a whole bunch of people, all these families that are going to be on this lake, and they're going to want to use that because they have this pier, and you can get kayaks fairly reasonable now, and why not? I mean, that's what we do, because I live on a lake, and I understand that. But everybody that comes through there, even with a small impact, it erodes all the sides of the lakes. I've lost, I've lived there 25 years, and I have lost shoreline just because of the situation of small boats going through. It's just the natural thing of it. It's constantly changing, so you have to be a good steward of that. So if you put another 126 people that are using this and you're saying, "Oh, they're just going to look at it," I, I'm sorry, I respectfully disagree with that. You know, I, I just can't see that that would happen, because I, I wouldn't want to do that. And so, I just feel that this is just a really bad fit for this, for this very small lake. I'd like to see this table, because I don't think that we have got all the true information on this thing. I don't think the people that have submitted this thing really haven't showed exactly what they want. It was pretty, we really don't know what's going on here, as we've found out in our conversations. So I really, really honestly believe that we should table this and get some more information on it with the city and think about what's going on here before we actually go through with putting something that's going to be really an eyesore in the end.
Done?
I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Campbell, you want to take more?
No, thank you.
Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, it sounds like you're thinking that every single person that lives in this new development is going to buy a boat and put it at the dock. There's, there's a walking pier out there.
126 people.
If people want to get onto the lake with power boats right now, all they got to do is go across the street to the park, and there's public access right there. I don't see anywhere in these plans that there's going to be facilities to store boats, to have a marina or anything like that. This, to me, looks as it's going to be a dock that goes out into the water, people can walk out 30 feet and they can throw rod in the line. There's a boardwalk that goes to a park. I don't see people tearing up the beach, walking on a boardwalk. We're going to have that filled in with natural amenities that they're supposed to do. So I do not see, and besides that, everybody who lives in a lakefront apartment is not going to be on the lake 24 hours a day. I would say you're going to have not major usage out of that. You might get some people out there, but they're not going to be out there all the time in like this. It's not a go-to situation. This is amenity for the people that are there and for the people that want to come in and walk along the boardwalk on the street. I think some of this is being blown way out of proportion on what you think people are going to be doing.
Anyone else before I make my comments? Okay. As the oldest one here on the planning commission, and I'm older than many of you out there, I've been here for about 50 years. Prior to Toby's was Lakeside Inn, Lakeside, not yet, it's a bar. Anyway, they had a dock, they had a launching place, it was a public accessible launching place. I think I saw it used once in the entire time that Lakeside existed that I lived here. In terms of people using the facility as a launch dock, many may, but human nature being what it was, is, I suspect most people will be sitting in front of their TVs watching whatever rather than going out, because that's human nature. So the number of people actually doing it's not going to be 126 units worth. It'll be some much smaller number. That said, the next step would be for us to put forward a motion. I've heard distinct opposition to the proposed motion, which means you guys at least have voiced the tabling. So that may be the thing we need to go forward with, is making a choice between the motion and tabling.
Before I do, because I don't want you to make the motion to table, because the rubber rules of law, that takes care of everything on that. If we were to table this evening, what does that do to the project and where does that put with the council?
It has no good effects on the development, I'm sure, but I'll let Luke address that because he'd be the one who would have to carry it forward.
Well, Mr. Chair, I might have to defer to the developer in terms of their timeline, how this all fits in with...
How about to the council?
To the city council?
Does that stop the procedure?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can jump in. I mean, there's, you know, when applications are submitted, under state law, we have a certain amount of time, 60 days, which can, can be extended to 120 in circumstances to get through and review applications. The planning commission's a recommending body, so you make a recommendation to the city council. The city council has seen an earlier version of this proposal at a workshop setting, so they already have a familiarity with it. Staff is recommending moving this forward. We're aware of a number of the outstanding items, which is why we've put those in there as suggested, as suggested conditions here tonight. The applicant has also offered to meet with Lakeview Terrace, which we think is a great idea. So there could be two things really here is, next step is city council review. You could, if you feel there's enough information to move it along, you can make your recommendation. If that's the case, to move it along to city council, and that would give additional time for the applicant to have the meeting before that comes, before that comes back. Obviously, tabling is also another option that the committee does have, that they could table and bring back at a further meeting. And again, as Luke said, deferring to the, you know, the developer, I know they are on tight timelines here to try to, you know, get something built out here, you know, hopefully yet this year, and take advantage of a favorable climate. So with that, yeah, those are really the two options. Probably one last thing to note is that there is another formal opportunity for public comment, so if they're still on resolve items at that meeting that the developer has offered, post-planning commission, under our code, a public hearing also needs to be held at city council, so they'll be able to opportunity, if there's still questions or concerns, comments at that point, those could be addressed at the city council public hearing. And as you noted, Luke's also available as well to take emails or other questions in the interim. So kind of a long-winded next steps, those are your options. You can, you can pass, pass with changing conditions, you could table, you could deny. I mean, you have them all in front of you.
We have three motions, is my understanding. Plan unit development, preliminary plat, and final plat, and then also the site plan. And we will be taking each one individually. Were we to table, well, were they to all pass, the next steps for the site plan wouldn't, first off, we don't make the decision, it goes to city council. If we do pass the site plan, what does that mean actually in terms of construction? That doesn't immediately start it. There's a lot of discussions that have to take place before that, I'm assuming. Can you elaborate on that?
Mr. Chair, so that one gets really tricky because one of the conditions of approval for the site plan is approval of the proposed PUD.
Yes. That's why I said we, they're separate, we have to take each one individually. And the PUD, I see no reason to table personally.
A question, so as I understand this, though, if we were to vote on the PUD and deny that, there's no need for votes on the other items?
Nope, it would be dead.
Perfect.
Did you want to finish any comments on my earlier question?
Do you want to add material?
It's up to the commission, if you would like to see the exterior facade materials, we can bring those up, they're right there.
Okay.
Chair and commission, I can share just a little bit, Nicole Washburn with JLG Architects. Our goal, you know, in working with Patrick, he shared that really well, is to make communities better. The project we did together is five miles from my home, it's a community I live in, I'm extremely... I'm extremely proud of that work. The image that was ju-- we lost the image. Oh, there we go. This was actually part of a prior submission, that we just walked through some different images to get a sense of, you know, what is of interest in this community. So if we go through a couple of these slides, these are just case studies to give us some inspiration, looking at some ways to set back the building at the upper levels, to reduce the feeling of mass. On one side of the building, there is a tremendous amount of grade across, not just the length of the building, but the width of the building, and so we recognize that, and we want to find ways that we can, to make that feel like it's part of this community, this neighborhood. Next.
Sorry.
And just some inspiration images for the boardwalk. You know, I lived in Chaska, actually, where this development, my home was on that property, where they did a development, and just looking at what are the ways that we can access the lake and beautify that lake. I mean, it's a really good example of where people are able to enjoy the water without actually being in the water. Just that view and that connection is great. So the next slide, I believe, is, this is our image of our townhome property. We wanted to create these smaller buildings. We want to create some of that feeling of almost disconnection from, you see that boardwalk and some of the landscaping, so that it really is something that is more of a view than something that individuals are going to access. And apologize for the material piece. I could have had some things here, it didn't even occur to me, but we do have a few of the images of the different materials that we're considering in the upper right. Our goal, I love the feedback that was provided by the third-party review, we're definitely going to take that into consideration. We do our own reviews with our designers internally, just to get more feedback. So we want to do what we can to make this as successful as possible. Any questions that I could answer?
I appreciate you sharing these. The townhomes certainly look better in the render than how flat they are in 2D, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Renderings are better than line drawings, yes.
Yes.
Even though they are 15 feet apart, each one of them. They're four sections, 15 feet apart. To note.
Thank you.
At this point, any further discussion from anyone?
I guess I would just say, you know, my feelings on tabling this are, the applicant has worked with staff, they have done what they need to do, staff recommends approval. I believe we owe a vote to the applicant tonight, either to approve or to deny. Unless the applicant chooses to step up and say, "Hey, I want to table this and work through some things," but they have done what they need to do to get to this point, I believe we owe them a vote.
We would just be passing this on to the city council, because there'll be another place for you to comment and talk to the council on this. So we pass this, it would go on to the council, and they have to do it. This does not mean that it's going to be approved, that's still up to them. We don't have that authority.
We are the advisory, we have no teeth.
We are passing a recommendation, is all.
Right.
Right.
The true meeting you need to go to is the city council meeting.
So, taking the first one first, the planned unit development. Personally, I believe this should be passed regardless of what we do with the next two. Planning unit development sets the stage for being able to do anything with this particular area. So can I get a motion on the planned unit development?
So moved, as amended in the--
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. The next one is the preliminary plat and final plat. And, so you want to read that one? I don't have it in front of me, right?
Find the right spot.
Resolution approving the preliminary plat and final plat for Tanner's Lake second addition, subject to the conditions as read by Luke.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
It would pass three to two. Third piece is approving the site plan for the Tanner's Lake redevelopment, subject to the conditions as read by Luke.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
And three to two. So the motions pass as a recommendation to the city council, and comments will be heard there. So feel free to come back for that and voice your opinions. I would urge you to also send your questions to Luke for any subsequent discussions with the developer. Hopefully, you can get your issues resolved in that process.
Wait, is the city council meeting that the city council--
Luke?
So, Mr. Chair, commission, the city council meeting is to be determined, because the developer has to work through a few items, land control, title issues, so we truly don't know when the city council meeting will be. Again, there will be a public hearing notice mailed to folks who live within 500 feet of the site.
And the other question that might behoove us on that is MinDOT's participation in making the decisions, where does that fit in the process?
So--
When, I guess would be, when does it have to be done?
So technically, the city council can approve, if they so choose to, you know, approve the full package, the full approvals, subject to MinDOT review and approval, so. So the project can still proceed, but much like the watershed district, it, those are, it's like a contingent approval, if you will. Just a condition of approval, right? Yes, thank you.
That concludes our new business, staff liaison update.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So a couple things here, or a few things. Parks questionnaire, there's a handout that you all have at the dais. We encourage you to access the survey or the questionnaire there. There's a QR code, and I believe the website link. This is related to our parks planning efforts, and, yeah, we would really appreciate your feedback on that. Next, the, just an update on the previous city council meeting, the June 25 meeting. So the council approved the companion animal care, PUD amendment site plan application, and the city council also approved the CUP for the second garage request off 49th Street. Next here is that please expect an August planning commission meeting. We have at least one application, there might be even two or three applications that will move forward. And finally, I just want to introduce the planning commission to Hayden back there, he's sitting next to Andy, he's our planning intern, he's here with the city for the summer and studying planning at Minnesota State Mankato. Yeah. If you get a chance, say hi to him. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners updates, anyone have any updates that they wish to state?
Just a question for Luke, just to clarify, this park planning, this is long-range, future improvements, nothing immediate. That's correct, yes.
Anyone else? Tina, we'll move on to council liaison. Mr. Ingerbergson.
I have nothing, but if you have questions, I'll at least try to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That moves us to adjournment. We need to have a motion to--
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Thank you, sir.